It's incredibly frustrating that we don't have the basic information we need to understand how the evaluations were made in the first place. So, how do we come up with a reasonable proposal as to why it should be different? I have comps to propose and I've put them on the abatement request, but again, I have no confidence that you guys have what you need to determine whether Parker's suggestions are going to be, you know, helpful or legitimate. So, I just wanted to second what he said. It's been my experience also.
Yes.
Robin Johnson. After looking at the manual with the overlay maps of the neighborhoods that Parker determined what those neighborhoods were, if that's the only way they're going to review our abatement request, then it's going to look like they're fine. Is anybody going to go back or come out and look at that property and see if they made a mistake with that assessment? They probably came down at high tide when we have an hour or hour and a half when we can get in the water. And they determined that it was all up and down the river is tidal property, but our pole is mud flats, four hours out of the six-hour high tide. And he's got us wrong. He's got the whole neighborhood wrong. Are they going to come back and look at it and change that overlay? Or are they going to just look at that and say, "No, this is right. This is what this neighborhood is," when they determined it?
I don't know. Do you?
I cannot answer that specifically. I don't know what Parker Appraisal is going to do at this point with individual properties. What I can say is that the answers that we are seeking will be revealed through the process. It is unreasonable to think that the town is going to have all the answers going into this process when the process is new to us. We had our first re-evaluation since 2007. We changed from vision to trio. Our assessing agent retired. This is new. I have solid procedures in place to move us forward, and I believe wholeheartedly that all of the answers we've been looking for since the letters went out last year will be revealed through the process. If we let the process flow, we will learn, we will grow as a community, and in the future we'll wonder why we even had eight months of conversation arguing about stalling the process and not getting anything done. What would the board propose to do if we didn't use Parker Appraisal to run through these very important items? In the meantime, what would we do to get this work done? And what would happen if we got to commitment? What would the board say to me about my job performance if none of these items were completed and we could not commit taxes?
We would have a major problem.
So, I'm asking you to give us an opportunity to show us, to show you what we can do.
And I think that we gave you depth and we asked you to develop a plan, and I think the only thing we could do is to continue with the plan.
And I, we did ask you to come up with a plan, and we'll see how it goes, but I'm also asking you not to commit to spend one more penny with Parker Appraisal without us seeing the outcome of the next steps.
Oh, that's fine. Everything's going to be put before the board. There's actually going to be more transparency with the assessing process than you have ever seen.
That will answer everybody's questions, then.
And I hope it's true, because I'm a little scared now that you're saying there's no, I don't know if Parker Appraisal is going to show up, and we need some of those answers for him.
I don't know if they're going to show up at the Board of Assessors. They committed to showing up at Board of Assessment Review meetings. This is how we understand it.
But how do we learn the process and the questions that we have?
You're going to learn through the flow of the entire process. It's unreasonable to think that the board is going to learn how to value property in one sit-down with Parker Appraisal. That is not going to happen.
We're not trying to learn that in one sit-down.
That's what it feels like to me.
Can we wait our turn? What I'm concerned about is that if we take any more time and don't allow this plan to work, we won't learn anything. And I think, I think that as Christine is working with Parker, she's getting, she knows what the questions have been, and she can get answers to them.
I want to know the answers. I feel like, right now, I feel like they don't want us to know. I need to know some of these answers. I need to know about this tidal land. I need to know what A, B, and C. And if he won't talk to us, how do we ever?
How do we have the confidence in the process?
I've been trying to explain, and maybe I'm not explaining it in a way that people can understand, but to put it in simple terms, with this first round of abatements, Bob considers us to be still in the reevaluation process. During the revaluation process, which to him includes the first round of abatements, they do not get involved with municipal officials or individual taxpayers before the Board of Assessment Review meetings. This is how he has always handled his process.
That seems like we're missing a step, then, huh? Excuse me.
Let Christine finish.
So, I understand that you have questions. The board's questions and the taxpayers' questions deserve to be answered. Not all of this can happen immediately. I have gotten more done in the past three weeks than has happened in eight months, and I am asking the board to give me the latitude to continue to move the process forward and allow the answers to reveal themselves during the process. We are not going to get all of the answers going into process. It's just not going to happen.
Part of, part of the new book. And we can, we can hold off on abatements if we need to ask questions. God forbid. But I'm expecting that the explanations will be more complete with definitions and all that. And if they're not, then I think we have, is what I'm saying. Ask a question, please. Yes, of course, because now I haven't finished speaking.
So, Christine, it seems like we've left some of this process out. It's my understanding, as the assessors, we are the first round of review to abatements. We don't wait for them to go to the Board of Assessment Review. We look at them, and if we say, and they're denied, then they go for a second chance. We are supposed to be the first line of the discussion.
Yes, I didn't say anything.
They said that they were going to go directly. We weren't going to see it. What you just said, is that, did I hear that wrong?
Yes.
Yes. But if, yes.
Let me call on you, please. Dan.
Thank you. Thank you, Madeline. I just want to say that if they're not here, if there's nobody here that the board can refer to and say, you know, "Did this question get answered? Did that question get answered?" There's no possible way they can make a decision. And that's why I suggest you hire some sort of intermediary or something who can talk to them on behalf of us on a regular basis. Why is that funny?
That's Christine.
Because I'm the intermediary.
No, you're not. You're not.
Yes, I am. That's what we're hired to do.
We don't need to really.
He should laugh at him.
I'm not laughing at him.
Yes. Go ahead.
I heard Christine go through a very clear plan of how she was going to work for the next period of time, and it did involve getting answers to these questions. I think she has spent a lot of time, first convincing our board that the staff was capable of doing this, while everybody was just in turmoil, not knowing what to do. I appreciate your frustration. You've gone through at least two different rounds of trying to get answers, and you don't have them yet. Just a couple of weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago, at one of these meetings, Christine read a letter about what needs to be done. And it was a very thoughtful letter about how she, with the support of the staff and interacting with Parker Appraisal in a constructive way, could start to get the answers and start to move towards a sensible evaluation of every abatement request. I don't have one in the park. My sister-in-law does, and we've been communicating with her, and she's being patient and waiting for Christine's plan to be worked. I think we just need to quit fussing with everybody and let Christine and the staff move forward. And if the end of that, it doesn't work, well, then we got a problem.
And I'm stuck with a big tax bill.
Well, I'm here to.
So, thank you for that. Thank you for that.
I don't want you to get stuck with a big tax bill if you're not deserving of a big tax bill. And I, I don't think you should be, from what you've shared with me, but we've got to let the process start to work. Up till now, nobody's been able to figure out what to do. Christine has laid out a plan to work with the staff, the board, and the, and the Parker Appraisal, however helpful they may or may not be. If that falls on its face, we've got a big problem, and there's got to be some reconciliation. But I don't think we can sit here and say, "Don't, don't start the process until..." I mean, that, she has really stepped up and said, "Here's what we need to do as a town." And she's really thinking about you and every other person who has submitted an abatement and has been totally frustrated up to this point because the board couldn't figure out what they wanted to do. And now we're on a proposal. Let's let it work. I just wanted to spot.
We have.
Can I just respond to that?
No. That's part.
I mean, I just want to say, I just want to say thank you for that. I appreciate it. I'm not denigrating.
Excuse me. You've spoken. You have.
I just have a quick question. I mean, it's Linda. I live in West Bath.
Do you have Linda's name, please?
Lawson. And I just wonder, is there a peer review or some kind of intelligent intermediary of our town's people who could listen to these people and then present it to this?
That's not how it works, unfortunately.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah.
That's just the end.
Everything that we're trying to do here.
You don't have to go on.
It's just described in state statutes, so we're just trying to follow that as closely as we can.
Okay.
So, I'm all for letting this process roll out. I want to know what our step will be if Parker Appraisal doesn't show up, because I'm concerned they chose not to come last time. We, these three of us here, have questions that need to be answered, and I want to, I need the confidence, and I think our community needs a confidence, that we can come up with a process that is fair and transparent to everyone.
I think we've done that, and I think we've done it as far as we can do it. We do not know. We cannot predict the future. We can only deal with the present. The present says to me, we need to go with Christine's plan, get a, and if our questions are not answered at the end of the day, then we deal with what, with the what-ifs. But trying to anticipate is, to me, not helpful and only creates more anxiety at this point. I just don't need any more anxiety. Thank you. And I don't think anybody here does. Let's get stuff taken care of. A lot of questions will get answered. Whatever doesn't get answered, we can then take steps. We don't know, but if we don't get it started, we won't even be able to send out tax bills. And then, how do we pay the teachers? How do we pay Carly? How do we make sure the roads? We have to be able to send bills based on the value of the real estate in the town. Until we can get, go forward with this, not only will the people pay too much, there may be people paying not enough. And the idea is of taxes is that I pay taxes on the value of what my house is, even though I think maybe they've overvalued my view. Maybe somebody else is undervalued, but somewhere in the middle, within 10%, we need to come out so that we have fair taxes for everyone. And if we don't have a value at the end when it's time to send the bills, we can't. And then we're stuck. We cannot support the town if we don't have income. And the taxation is how we get our income. So, I don't see any other way than to go with this plan. And if we're not satisfied with the answers at the end, and not everybody is going to be satisfied, let's face it. The American Revolution was fought because of taxation. No one likes to be taxed. So, let's just get this done.
So, what is the schedule against Christine? What's the, what do you have laid out for this?
I.
You said, well, it's an abatement review schedule. Do we have a timeline?
This is the entire schedule through, yeah. It's your, it, you have.
So, when, I guess, when are these, when do the first bills come out to the community? What's, when, when is Parker going to address all of these concerns? When should people start to expect to see this?
I don't know exactly, but I would think that after they complete the pickup work in April, May, then.
We're not going to pay pickup work for them.
We have to.
Excuse me.
That is part of the program.
You don't get to make decisions all by yourself.
We need to get the work done, Suzanne. How would you propose we get the work done?
I have a hard time paying someone that hasn't met a commitment to me giving them the money. I do. And we've talked, and I know, I'm sorry, I'm not done. Kathy, I believe you shared a comment about that a while back about Parker getting additional funds. I think before we start giving them more money, they need to earn what we've already given them.
These conversations that have happened amongst the board members for the past eight months or so have been a result of public input that may or may not have been helpful to what we're doing here. The information that you sometimes put out into the community is that, you know, the word litigation came up, incompetence on Parker Appraisal's part. What would cause them to want to work with us until these allegations are resolved?
They need to earn trust.
In the past three weeks, I think the fact that they showed up the past two weeks, reviewed 46 abatements, and, you know, took steps to show me how to use the transfer tax site so that I can begin processing deeds, I think that shows their commitment in working with me and working with the Board of Assessors in the future.
And that's not.
If you stop putting misinformation into the community based on what members of the public are telling you.
But Christine.
You need to trust what the staff is telling you.
But Christine, you said this evening.
That's what we have to do.
I understand that, but Christine, you said this evening that the adjustments for remain were part of their initial contract, and now we're talking about paying the pickup work, which, which we didn't agree to give them any more money yet, but yet you're making a commitment that that has to happen to move forward. So, I'm trying to figure out really where this ends up, and why are they getting paid more money when we're awaiting the initial process?
The revaluation contract is through the abatement process. Anything that happens after the abatements, including pickup work, needs to be paid for in some manner regardless of who does it, unless we have somebody on staff, which we do not. So, I, I don't see any other way of getting it done. If the board decides that they're not going to budget money to get the pickup work done, then we're going to have a pretty shouting tax commitment.
I'm not saying we're not going to do pickup work. I think we need to figure out who's going to do it.
Since we're just a few short months away, I don't think we have time to find somebody else. And we're talking about this year. We're talking, my process, the procedures I laid out, is through tax commitment for 2024. And when the board reassesses where we're at, at tax commitment, you may choose to do something different. But right now, at this late stage in the game, I feel like we need to move forward with Parker.
Kathy, are you comfortable paying Parker more money?
I don't think we have a choice. I think we're, we're stuck.
But we've talked about also for months hiring a part-time assessor who could also do the pickup work.
A part-time assessing agent.
And how do we do that with a short amount of time that's left? Dan. That's actually not on the agenda if we want to have hiring on the agenda, but it needs to be on the agenda.
I'd like to put it on the next meeting agenda. I'm going to talk about that. Or come assess her on the next agenda for next meeting. She doesn't want to talk about it tonight, so can I, I'd like to move and put that on the next meeting discussion.
I don't think it needs to be. I think I'll have to put that page in.
I'm sorry. Can we have one meeting?
Could we, could we? Because it mumbles the tape.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I can't take notes when people are talking.
And it mumbles the tape, so she can't go back and check to see what she heard was what she heard. So, sorry. So, go second on that motion.
I don't even motion to put something on the agenda, do I? I thought any one of us could put an agenda. I don't.
I'm just wondering to what end, and I didn't quite hear what you were proposing if on the agenda.
To discuss an assessing agent, just.
I think that we, I'm asking the board to allow me to run through this process before you reconsider.
Okay. I don't agree with that.
Can we talk about it? Should be, should be, I don't want to keep putting this off, and if this doesn't work out with Parker Appraisal, I want Plan B ready to go. I'm not saying we have to engage it, but I'd like to know that we have a Plan B put in place to protect the town.
Just so you're aware of the time commitment with the budget committee meetings, your next couple of meetings, I believe, I have to look at the calendar, but I think you're only going to have a meeting that's one hour in length. So, coming up on town meeting, it's important to know what you need to put on the agenda. I'm just putting that up there.
I'm pretty confident that we didn't need to motion or approve any agenda. I am from any one of our members either.
You're right. So, we could put that on the agenda for discussion.
For the next meeting.
For the next meeting.
Okay. So, that is the board. Our next meeting, is it okay? Yes. It's ahead of the budget, too. That's why I'm saying you have an hour.
Okay. Sure. Did you want to say something about their pay payment review schedule? We have a list of the abatements.
That's just if you want to schedule meetings to review the abatements, if you're ready to schedule a meeting for more than one meeting.
How many have been today? Have been reviewed so far? Forty-six?
Forty-six. That's all of them. All of them under review. One of those has, one has already applied to the Board of Assessment Review, so.
Which one was that one?
State or Odell, I don't see. They just applied today.
I, I'd like to consult my other calendars before I, so, I presume we're, at least I have a vision that we're talking about having abatement reviews separately from regular board meetings, or did?
Yes, absolutely.
Are you looking for a full day?
Yes, I really am. And, and if you want to wait until I find out whether or not Parker Appraisal can commence being there, that might be a good idea. And the reason why I'm suggesting daytime is because I know it's hard for your schedules, but I know Kathy, who said that you would make time.
I'll make time.
Suzanne will make time. So, if it can happen during the day, it would probably be best, rather than when we're, we've all had a full day and we're tired.
Yeah. We want to keep in mind too our second half budget meetings, so that.
Yeah, I don't know when they are.
Thursdays at four o'clock.
Thursdays at four.
We have one at three, right?
That's not required. That's just a commitment.
Is there a day of the week that works better or not at all for any of you?
I would prefer not Mondays.
Not Mondays.
How soon are we trying to do this?
April, as soon as, well, I would suggest as soon in April as we can.
Wednesday's worked well for me.
Wednesday's worked well for me, too. I can commit to April 3rd for a full day. Okay, that's a Wednesday.
I'll put this here and I'll forget what it is. And would you, you will ask Jessica if she can be here?
Yeah, it goes to her, but I will find out. And I'm hoping that he will agree to doing that, because I think if, you know, especially this first time that you're going through abatements without Ron, if you find that the recommendation or the explanation is insufficient, I agree that it would be helpful to have him in the room to say, "This is what we meant for." Yeah. So, I will find out if they will attend.
I think it's important for us and our community. All we need to do is instill a confidence that it's the right value, and people will accept whatever that is. But until we get there and the question's out there, they, they don't feel that it's fair, and maybe it is, but we don't know the answer.
Okay, we'll start with that. And I will let you know.
I have a few agenda ideas. Kathy, do you have any suggestions?
I think we're going to be pretty busy through May.
I think so, too.
David?
Did we resolve permission to the, the plan?
I didn't hear what you said.
Did the board vote to approve the plan?
This was the anonymous of the plan. We voted to have Christine develop the plan.
I think we should have voted to approve it.
So, you're not going to vote to approve?
We could. We can. So, I vote that we approve the plan for abatements and reviews through commitment.
It was one caveat that.
As presented.
We're not, I'm not, we need to clarify that there's no additional money committed at this time to Parker Appraisal.
There has to be additional money, Suzanne, which I have explained numerous times.
It is not, it is not in the motion. The motion is that we go ahead with the plan as developed by Christine.
One second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, no. Say, oh, no. Oh. Thank you. Motion carries then. So, comments, announcements? Further public comment? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.